All present?
Thank you. And see approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I have one change. Like to remove item 2A from the consent agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support it.
Motion by Commissioner Corcoran, second by Commissioner Kier, to approve the consent agenda as amended. Questions? Call vote, please.
Kier.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Mildred.
Yes.
Simo.
Yes.
Virchow.
Yes. I have the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support it.
Motion by Commissioner Corcoran, second by Commissioner Kier, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, and E, review and place on file, one, the statement of revenue expenditures, and two, the cash investment summary report.
Thank you. So tonight I'm reporting financials for the month of July. July is our first month in our fiscal year. And we are approximately eight percent through fiscal year at the end of July. Revenue expenditures of all of our major funds are in line with this benchmark, so I don't have anything significant to report on the revenue expenditures report. If the commission has any questions, I can answer them now. If not, the cash investment summary report is also included in the agenda packet, stating the activity for July. So a couple of notable items, the trust and agency fund. We see the balance increase due to the collection of some of the property taxes. So we are a month and a half in with most of our property taxes here at the beginning of our fiscal year. And then there are two, the water and sewer bond redemption accounts. We saw that balance, still balance, decrease through the angle of principal and semi-angle of interest payments in 2010 and 2017 months. If there's any other questions on the cash investment summary report, please.
I'll make a motion to review and place on file, one, statement to the revenue expenditures or revenue expenditures, and two, cash investment summary.
Support it.
Motion by Commissioner Corcoran, second by Commissioner Kier, to review and place on file the two reports as they stated. Has statement, and any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item F, approval of the monthly check register report.
Thank you. The monthly check register report for July was included in the agenda packet. Any questions on any of those items? Can you address those, though?
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly check register report.
Support it.
Motion by Commissioner Corcoran, second by Commissioner Simo, to approve the monthly check register report as presented. Any other questions? Call vote, please.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Mildred.
Yes.
Simo.
Yes.
Kier.
Yes.
Virchow.
Yes. Moving on to item G. Citizens wishing to address the commission on items on the agenda? Just a reminder that when I call you up, you could just please state your name and address. We ask you to present, to present your issues in a respectful way, if possible, and are more than happy to listen to your concerns. And each person is allowed a three-minute time period, which cannot be transferred to another person according to commission rules. So at this time, if anybody would like to address the commission on items on the agenda?
I don't understand what you're saying.
So we have an agenda.
This is my first time on here.
Sure, no problem. So the agenda with a list of business that we're going to discuss. And first of all, I'll put those topics there. Thank you. And first, we allow the citizen to come up and address topics that we are going to discuss this evening and possibly take action on. And then after those topics, if there's no other questions from the citizen on those topics, then we open it up to topics that are not listed on the agenda that may not be, that aren't scheduled to be discussed this evening.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So are there citizens wishing to address the commission on items on the agenda? Moving on to citizens wishing to address the commission on items not on the agenda. Mr. Albert?
Actually, it's the citizens that are wondering why certain things aren't on the agenda. Back on June 24th, Steve, our spokesman for our water group, gave you a list of nine demands. None of them have ever been addressed. They were again mentioned on the 8th with the water quality. And again on the 22nd. And then in the auditorium, we can't hear anything. None of those things have ever been addressed. They're never on the agenda, and I don't know why. I also sent on August 15th a FOIA request and an email that also mentioned those things, as well as the fact that at the last city commission meeting, Steve called for the resignation of our city manager and utilities director. How come those things are never on the agenda? Did you people get the email that I sent you? Karen, did you get it? With the FOIA request? Of course, I won't get an answer. But why aren't these things on the agenda? It's very important issues that affect everybody here. A $550 water deposit for one. Our rate history rates. A 10% late fee. No grace period. Those are all issues besides the quality of our water that affects everybody in this room. We have 600 members that we represent. Why is this never on the agenda? You know, Rick, you wouldn't shut up at the last meeting, but you answered a single question for me here now? Why can't we have some dialogue on this? Why can't we discuss this stuff? These are other issues that have to be discussed. When will they be discussed? When will we actually follow the recommendations that we gave? We're the, these are the people that it's affecting. When will that happen? I hope you people are corrupt because this level of incompetence is beyond belief. If you cannot even put things on an agenda to discuss, what does it take for a citizen to actually get something on the agenda? I looked through your rules. I looked through the charter. When does, when does a citizen have a right to ask and have something to deliberate and discuss? How does that get on the agenda? Didn't you get my email? Yes, no, maybe, shake your head? Stand up, wiggle, do something? Did you get it?
Yes.
Why is it not on the agenda?
I know I had like workshops where we talked about like how fees are adjusted up and down and stuff like that. I don't know if it'd be beneficial to hold in a workshop format to discuss how or why some of the rates are the way they are. I think the city has been burned a couple times as far as rates. I think sometimes that explains why they've gone up. But I don't know if that would solve the problem, like a workshop.
A workshop forum is unfair to the public. We can't speak, we can shut down every time you go to a workshop.
Well, maybe one of those things, if we could hold a workshop, know what the questions are, have a dialogue between the city staff. I'm just making a suggestion, so.
Well, that's a starting point. Why aren't these issues up on the agenda? I need an answer.
We probably have the city attorney just talk about the city meeting. Maybe the meeting is about before. And then how, what does, you know, what their opportunity is to speak on any particular topic that the area has a issue.
The Open Meeting Act requires the public to have a chance to speak at a public meeting. But it's not a question and answer period. It's the right to address the city commission on items on the agenda or not on the agenda, subject to reasonable rules, one of which is to identify yourself and keep your comments in three minutes. If there is a public hearing on specific issue, the public does have a right to speak about that topic more expansively. But the requirements of the Open Meetings Act allow the public to address the commission or met by the public comment period. This is not a town hall where we all have an equal voice in debate and issue. This is the time where the city conducts its business, and we have to do that in public because of the Open Meetings Act. But this is not a question and answer session. This is not a debate.
How does, how does a citizen get something on the agenda is what I'm asking.
The city manager has an authority under the charter to put items on the agenda. There is no legal requirement to have an agenda. We do the agenda formally happen, and that's part of the city's policy. The city manager by charter established the agenda. There is no legal obligation to put a citizen's demand on the agenda. It's up to the manager.
So basically, citizens don't have a say in anything?
You have a right to comment during the comment section. That's satisfied the Open Meetings Act, and that's consistent with the procedure followed by most municipalities, a public comment section.
So you do the very bare minimum?
You can let most cities and municipalities in state Michigan a public comment section limited to three minutes, some limited to five. But the city has to be able to conduct its business with a minimum of disruption.
So then why wasn't business put on the city commission's agenda? That's what Jim is asking.
The city's business is on the agenda.
No, it's not. So the citizens have absolutely no right to petition their city commissioners to actually discuss an important issue in this town. Because you would lose.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, for your qualifications.
To maybe add, just for the, for the public, you know, a lot of the financial questions. We have multiple meetings during the budget process. Probably six to eight different public meetings, public hearings, and they address, you know, everything, all the rates that people are asking and talking about. So that's the forum that we use every year to go through the rates that Paul came up with. So again, that's every year, that same process is used. And again, if you want to have some additional discussion on those in some other format, that's okay. But that is a process, you know, that we use. There's multiple opportunities for the public to lean on that.
Because if we should actually have something on the agenda.
Commissioner Kier?
So it would have to be changed in the meeting rules? Tell about, if there was a group of citizens that wanted to have something on the agenda, to be added?
You can always change your rules. The commission can, you know, your, your rules for operating.
Because I heard the one email, and the opinion said that the city manager made up the agenda. But I thought, well, I couldn't find the rules. I was gonna ask you for a copy, you have a copy this week.
Yeah, we do have copies.
There was a partner where, then it used to be like two commissioners could have something to put on the agenda, if they agree also? For the mayor and the commissioner?
Actually, I think they set a special meeting thing.
No.
Like, your meeting minutes, they're gonna be.
I have a copy of the rules right here.
Your meeting rules are your meeting rules. If you want to adjust that, you have the opportunity.
You can depart from the order of business on the agenda by two-thirds voted members present.
Okay, that's right. Like, remember, it's been so long since I looked at.
Should I ask you to fix that motion?
I didn't want to take a meeting.
We would like to waive some of those rules so we could discuss. These issues are very important. Would you please?
Probably, something, if we were to change something on this, probably have a workshop or something.
What I'm saying right now, you can suspend the rules. And we can actually discuss these issues now, if you can be added to the agenda. And I'm asking you to take a roll call vote. If two-thirds did agree, then we can actually discuss these things. There are people, and this is very important, and I'm asking you to do this. The city silence instead, right?
Well, I can, I'm just speaking for one, as one commissioner. I can assure you that at the last meeting, we had an opportunity to hear.
Nobody had an opportunity to hear anything in that auditorium?
We heard what you had to say.
Because you were screaming. The acoustics are horrible.
Well, we still got to hear what you had to say. And, and we are here to hear more, if you'd like to, each comment. And in the process, the city is working on the testing and.
What about, what about the security department? We're never gonna address those things.
That's not necessarily true. We just haven't gotten to that point yet, so. But we have.
On August 15th, I sent you an email requesting that those things be added to the agenda. I know you got them, Karen, because you did answer my FOIA request with another delay. Why wasn't that brought up to the city manager and put on the agenda? Because the city manager doesn't want to discuss possibly losing his job? Or we certainly never want to change anything in the city to be progressive and actually help the people in the community?
I think Commissioner Corcoran's suggestion to us that we have a workshop and.
A workshop where nobody will be allowed to speak?
To, I understand, but we can look at that issue. And we figured that the most important element of your concerns was the quality of the water first, in terms of starting that.
Agency may come and look.
And so the health department has stepped in, and the city manager has. There's a big progression of things that have happened since then. And that is utmost important to first determine.
If it didn't, if the EPA involved, nothing would have happened. This has been going on for 20 years.
Anyway, so. So until, I personally feel until we settle the water quality issue, then we will. And at the same time, we can start looking at the other concerns in terms of understanding, just educating ourselves in understanding about the rate structure and all that, if we do that.
Should you have to be educated at this point in your career?
No, I mean.
As a commissioner?
Thank you for the insults, Mr. Albert.
It's not an insult. I'm saying, you're either corrupt
I tried to.
or you're incompetent. It's everyone's.
I tried to make something, okay, we're gonna move on.
All right.
Is any other citizen wishing to address the commission on items not on the agenda? Mr. Martel?
Down North California, West Francis Street. I believe what Mr. Albert has requested is a motion. Now, if Mr. Kier wants to make a motion and it gets seconded, then it has to go off for a vote. Plain and simple. Applied by the rules. One makes a motion, the second, then it goes for a vote. Otherwise, ignore it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to address the commission on items not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Kathy Orkelsky. I live at 708 Southern Street. I'm a fairly new Ironwood resident. I've been here almost two years. I've never lived in a community where a utilities bill didn't tell you how much water you used, what the extra charges were for going over, or whatever your limit is. And there were never any questions about why bill was higher than it usually was. Why can't the city of Ironwood have a water bill that actually states your water usage? Not just how much you owe, but the actual usage. Another question I had was, it seems to me that the commission has decided that the best way to go is a water filtration plant or a water filtration system. There are other options. Is there an engineer that's looking at other options, such as an ozone system? Or such as joining with the give it range of water authority? Mr. Anderson said that Go Give It Ranges doesn't have the capacity for us. Then why didn't they extend the offer to Ironwood, what was that, 10 years ago? To be part of the system? They must have had the resources then. And I'm pretty sure some people have talked to them about this. So I don't understand why the emphasis is on this water filtration system. I want to make sure that the other options are being considered. Another concern I have is with light. I know it's an issue, and I know there's things being taken care of. But some of it is so obvious that it's hard to understand why it hasn't been addressed. These abandoned cars all over town. Two car lots, one on my lot, and one right in town. Why are those cars allowed to sit there for all these years? Why aren't they cleaned out? I don't know who's in doing this, but. And then we drive down the streets in town, and you see abandoned buildings or even occupied buildings with broken windows and things. Aren't those supposed to be boarded within a certain amount of time? I just wonder, why aren't these things taken care of? Because I'll tell you the truth. My brother and sister-in-law went up here to visit me from Detroit. And my sister-in-law was shocked at what she saw in Ironwood. She had a very bad word for all of our town. And she is from Detroit. She knows what light looks like. And she said, you guys have a big problem. And we've got a light commissioner, we've got the public safety department. Something should be done. And I think it's, it's here. It's at a town hall that we have members in. Thank you.
Are there other citizens wishing for you to come on up?
I can talk from here, I got a big mouth.
Your name and address, please.
My name's Dave Davis. I live at 859 Van Buster Road. And I'm not a frequent person here, but I just wanted to address the item on the agenda about the deer hunt. Can I do that? I missed, because I'm not familiar with your procedures.
Technically, that was the item before this, to speak to items on the agenda.
I'm sorry, that's fine. If I can, that's fine too, yeah?
So you can?
I can, I can.
We're gonna be talking about that at the meetings. I guess if there are some questions the commission has of the deer hunting group, they are here to represent that particular topic. So, I mean, if you have questions, you want, you know.
You want us to wait till the end or something, or no?
Sure.
You're on, yeah, it's at the end of the agenda. So it's not, so wait, so yes, we talk a little more? Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Will we step up to the podium? They also have a long list. I'm dressing the water. Oh, I'm sorry. Blanche phone has a 504 Pennant Street. And I drink only tea, so I decided to run it through a coffee pot that only gets water through it. And these are what my coffee filters look like after one use. And this is water from my house, and this is bottled water from Marne. Now, which one would you rather drink? I can afford to buy bottled water, I'm on a big sink pump. But since I've lived here, I've only lived here like three years. I've had kidney surgery. My cat has had kidney problems, which I paid $400 for. And my dog just had kidney problems. And he, and this is just like last month. So, and I don't understand why, I've only lived here for three years, and all of us are getting kidney problems? I guess that's all I have to say. You guys want to keep my evidence, or? Or I do, or consider, does somebody want to test it? Oh, this is my first time here, I apologize.
That's okay.
Apologize.
Any other citizens wishing to address the commission on items not on the agenda?
Hi, my name is Andrew Calder, 134 West Coolin Street, I'm in Washington. I lived here for about 24 years, and I've noticed that this water thing has just been a giant downhill spiral. It was kind of like a open secret, nobody wanted to talk about it. And I just bought a house here. There's no more dreams of going to the west coast, to California. I'm here, I'm here to stay. And I'm just flabbergasted at what happened last meeting to come to this meeting, and you guys don't even have anything on your agenda for the water. I mean, okay, so Jim Albert and Steve Frank start snooping around, wanting to test the waters. Then you guys, not them, you guys issue a warning that infants can't drink the water. This is not a conspiracy theory, that was a city-issued warning. And you know, on Facebook and stuff, we got videos and stuff of you guys saying the water's fine. The people that you respect and talk to, the water's fine. I mean, what can't, how do you expect us to act? The water's fine, and then babies can't drink it. We can't do business or government like this here in Iowa, Washington.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to address the commission on items not on the agenda? Yes, sir.
I'm David Moore, 205 South Curry Street. I'm gonna ask you guys the same question as Ted, nobody. I called them because my table was very spotty. And the response was, it's like y'all, we can guarantee you perfect service every time, but you expect me to pay you 100% for perfect service every time? You expect me to pay for, if they're water risky, the same price that you're asking me to pay for, the water again? It's not risky. Jim Albert has a half a dozen licenses. He got one knock from one person. That's absurd. That's malfeasance at least. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to address the commission on items not on the agenda?
Oh, wow. Just wanted to double-check something here. The chief of police is here? But Bob Turvenden, the water utilities manager, isn't? Okay, interesting. I think we all agree that this issue with water is probably the biggest issue we've seen in the past decade in our country. The city manager wouldn't put it on the agenda to give an update, an official agenda item. Not a single commissioner bothered to say, hey, I think this should be on the agenda. We should be talking about it and sharing information with the public. Again, I would expect the utilities manager to be at the meeting to talk about the water utilities, and not the chief of police to sit in the corner and, I guess, supervise all of us to make sure we all get it. Probably. I will give you, I'll commend you on one thing. You got the microphones working. Why did it take over a decade of people complaining? Why has it taken over a decade of people complaining about the water? Boy, you didn't do anything about that. Jim's the one who started that ball rolling. You had a couple people, they showed up late, they missed the public comment thing on items on the agenda. Could you just let them speak? No, get that whole debate, looking at one another, can we risk it, and all of this. This is how you're doing. We're under 5,000 people. Since the year 2000, we have lost 25% of our population. Do you think this is Chicago? Huh? It's a small town. You can't just be friendly with people? You make everything a huge issue, formality, or everything? You suggested a workshop several years ago when they brought up the water fees and everything. We never had it. So we'll never have this one either. But you know what? Honestly, I don't give a crap anymore. So how about we put everything out in the open? You want to blindly follow the law. That's what you said. First of all, to say that the FOIA act was not to limit public participation. It was supposed to be a last-ditch effort of the public to get information from the city, but then it wasn't shared. You've turned that into yet another way to keep information from the public. But fine, let's put it all out in the open here. Coleman and Broome. Hey, we're following that law exactly. How many people in here know that the mayor and her family, the city manager, and the community development director, as long, as well as the retired president of Coleman Engineering that gets every no-bid contract in this home are in business together? In order for them to get their license, the city commission had to recommend it to the state licensing authority. Your mayor made a big issue of recusing herself from that vote because of a conflict of interest. You shut that buzzer off. At no point, at no point did the city manager or any commissioner admit that the city manager is an investor. admit that the city manager is an investor, an active business partner. Your community development director was hired to his position after he became an investor. Our city charter prohibits our city manager from engaging in any political activity besides voting. There have been multiple candidates for state elections who have had bents at Cold Iron Brewing. That is a conflict, that is a violation of our city charter. So you want blindly follow the exact rules? There it is. He violated our charter. He should be terminated immediately. And it's for the rest, it's a ridiculous conflict of interest. Our city manager, he gets reviewed once a year. That occurs in closed session. And while that's common in many communities, what's not so common is there's absolutely no paperwork involved. Nothing is ever released to the public besides, we think he's doing a good job. There's no scoring, nothing. No, we'd like you to work on this item for the next year, or particularly please, and how you've improved over this. There's nothing. And all the globe does is report, he got a good review.
Thank you, Stephen.
That's it?
Yes. Thank you.
And now you can't even have to be a member of the public and get something added to an agenda.
Any other citizens wishing to address the commission items, not on the agenda?
I'm not really watching the public speaking and have no vendetta against all of this.
Again, if you could just state your name and address, please.
Dominic Esther, three sixty Pickle Street.
Three sixty what? What was your address, I'm sorry?
Midland Avenue, Lord Gomery. You had a screw last meeting. At the workshop, Mr. Seymour sat there smugly, was back to the audience, and every now and then he looked back at us to take a sip of water. Now, to me, that's where it is. But yet they want respect. And then you also made a remark that you didn't realize there was a water problem until you talked to people that you respect. When you got elected, I don't know what kind of oath you had to take, but I thought it would be to represent everybody, not just your handful clique that you respect. And when I brought that bottle of water out, and put it on the table in between you, and I got that over the bathroom downstairs, I went to the urinal, and I took a pee, and I flushed the toilet, and I thought, well, maybe it didn't work. I did it again, and it was the same color. I ran a tap water, and I asked all of your office if I could use this bottle, because it was empty. And he let me, and I prepared, put it up in front of you and Mr. Milburn, and you could see it was wrong. And I'm thinking, as I'm bringing it up, there's some stupid thing to bring up there because it just had a fire. If anyone who's had any sense, you would have come up with a remark, oh, you just had a fire, and you were flushing, you never put the fire out, that's why the water was gone. And Mr. Milburn, who said that he never bought a bottle of water, had a bottle of water at that meeting, and he says, I bought the water and poured it out and filled it with tap water. All stupid, you think the people of Iowa are... How many people do you think in that room actually believe that remark? And if you actually did do that, you have no business in that chair. And I rewatched when they had their, on prior TV, of all commissioners running, I called three times because it was supposed to be on TV for three nights in a row, and they always had some kind of remark, why it wasn't on. So I called them up, and I said, are you gonna save back pocket, just like the Iron Daily Gold? And they said, no, we're not. I said, well, why is it supposed to be on, it's not on? She couldn't give me an answer. She called me up that afternoon and said, let all your friends know that it will be aired tonight. And I got my few friends, I don't have a big following by any means, to watch that. And I'm not gonna say who, but the majority of who was running, tooting their own hearts. There was only one man, and he's sitting right over there, and actually had an agenda as to what he could do to improve the situation. I'm not saying all the stuff that he said could possibly be done, but he actually had an agenda. Mr. Milburn commented how mazy our garbage cans, how colorful our garbage cans look. They're yellow and black, and black and gray, colorful. And he also said, Iowa's never looked better. And he called me an old timer, I have lived here all my life. And Iowa, in my mind, has never looked worse. It's a pigsty. And for one year, when Bob Richards went someplace else for a year, they promoted Jason Allen into, I have nothing against, to be the former Don Public Works. He don't know nothing about Public Works. He knew nothing. But for one year, we got away without getting a white officer, because the police department was able to do it.
Respectful, if you could wrap things up, please.
Pardon?
If you could wrap things up, please, you, thank you.
Don't thank you for my comments. I have so much more to say.
Any other citizens wishing to address the commission items, not on the agenda?
Why should they? You don't address them. Why should anybody stand up and ask a question?
Because when he asks his question, they put their foot in their walls every time they speak, and that's why he won't win the talk.
We do listen. Any other citizens wishing to address the commission items, not on the agenda?
Scott, I have a comment. Over our last meeting, we had the other company coming to do the water testing, and then I know some of the folks that are public hearing downstairs, we were able to test some of their water. Is that something that you can keep on doing if somebody has a concern like Blanche?
Yeah.
Yeah, she has one concern with her water, is that something that we can bring to their house? Or, or with, is there a procedure that we can?
Yeah, we'll talk, again, we're working under the guidance and direction of the state evil group there are. You know, people like tell us what to do within the Department of Health. So again, we can bring it up to them, I'm not sure, you know, because they're doing all that actual sampling, and they take the tests and everything. So we can ask them that question, very good question, and see how much, you know, they can go and do. They've done quite a few already, but they're willing to do more, that's, you know, we'll find out.
Have you ever heard anything else back from the engineering firm? Water study?
The R's.
I see you weren't on that.
Yeah, we're going out with proposals this week. So we sent out, it takes a process to get that out, get the firms, send it out to them. So we are going to send it out this week, so if there are other firms that anybody knows, I don't know if you mentioned yet, a couple firms that he's aware of.
I haven't had the information from you two.
Yeah, we haven't sent them out yet, but if there is a, you know, some of you know someone that you'd like it to be sent to, let us know. We'll send it to them, so.
They didn't, they never got back.
But, that's where we're at, the process.
I have another question. I wanted to address something else, but it doesn't have anything pertaining to the water. My logbook, since I didn't use my last three minutes. If you don't want me to, I won't. Okay. Um, there is a leash law for cats here in Iowa, and like I said, I haven't been here that long. And um, my cats are from California, and they're older. And that, I get the police call them every year from my neighbor. Nobody else complains, it's just this one neighbor, she complains about everything. They're at least at my house like every, every other day, if not at least four times a month, about something, or wondering, you know, different things. But my cats, if I would put them on a leash, they would hang themselves. And I got a video on my phone right now, I have a really heavy front door. And my one cat, just don't think he can open up that door if you want to see the video. And it's like, how, I like, if I try and hang him, his cats aren't like dogs. They, once you open that door, they're gone. And I have two doors, and what they'll do is they'll go to the second door, I'll do the first door, into the basement, and my basement's right here, and they are so slick that they just wait for that crack of the door, and they're out. It's not like they don't come in at night, because they'll come in at night. So I have a neighbor complaining that, that they're defecating in their, in her flower van or whatever. But, I have a litter box outside, just in case they juke it out. And they will use their litter box, because they'll go outside all day and come in and use the litter box. So, but, is there any way we can just, I can understand dogs, but I've never seen a cat, a cat run up and, you know, try and fight with another dog, or a person, or anything like that. So, is there any way I could get that on the agenda, is that what I asked for? Like I said, this is my first time, and I, since I am a.
We probably don't, you know, have, never talked with public safety. If you just talk about the logic, sure, you know, we're understanding how we enforce that, have some discussion with you. So I think we have your contact information, can you talk to you about that?
Okay.
That could be beneficial.
Okay, thank you so much. You know, regarding the cats, yes, across the street from my house are seven empty homes. Most of them are still full of all the junk that people left in them years and years since they moved out. There are feral cats in the neighborhood. They're not on leashes, nobody seems to give a rip about the feral cats. The population of squirrels and rabbits and rodents is outrageous. We need those cats out here. Because there's too many vacant properties. Was my three minutes up? Yeah, in California, they have colonies where they have, um, um, cat colonies that aren't feral, that they sniff their ears, so it does keep going on the rodents and stuff like that. And I, I can start taking pictures, but every time the cats are outside, they bring me little, little treasures like moles and mice and stuff like that. So they're actually out there doing their job, paying their rent, you know? So, but I, I don't understand, I've never heard of a cat leash law. You know, and I, I, my sister, which I don't want to, I'm sure we're out there, really? Anyway, she has a cat, and it ended up in home shelter a couple times. And um, the, what home sheltered said was, get a breakaway collar with a bell so that they know it's your cat. Well, I have a cat that's bigger than my dog, I don't even know if it's fair on his neck, because I try and keep him in, because I get the cops, or the police, or the animal control calling all the time about my cats. I've tried pushing them outside in the major, and they won't go. Tried pushing them out in the rain so that they know, maybe they wouldn't want to go outside anymore. You know, but as soon as it breaks on a day, like any other animal, a person, they want to be outside, you know? And I had, I just had this police caller, I mean, the other day, Officer White telling me that this was just a warning that, because my cat was over in the neighbors, and she's got surveillance cameras, whatever. And it's like, I, I, how do you keep a cat in your yard? You know, even if I got a kennel, you know, and I'll, and for, these cats are old, like I said, they're like, they were raised in California. You know, so they don't understand, you know, you can't go outside, maybe that's animal cruelty. I know what the budget was up, I'm sorry, I.
Thank you.
Or else I can just contact.
Yeah, we'll update you, you do that later.
Okay, thank you. Any other citizens wishing to address the commission items, not on the agenda?
Can you talk voice? Can you talk backwards?
Any other citizens wishing to?
I have something. If you want a water test kit, I can get you, or you can come back to my building over here. And that's through the Virginia Tech. Very good test. Just stop by.
Yes, ma'am?
Hi.
I have to get Stephen's name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Terrica. I live at six oh one East Air Street, who've been here for about thirteen years or so. I definitely sympathize with what the stress that you guys are under. However, I feel like you guys would get a lot more respect from the people if you just say, we don't know what's causing this. Rather than going and beating around the bush constantly. We heard at first that the water discoloration was caused from the water sitting stagnant in, I'm sorry, really, there was, sitting stagnant in the pipes. Um, but yet you made the recent claim after the fire that the water was discolored because of the flushing of the pipes. What you had claimed to have fixed the problem in the first place. The flushing of the pipe was your go-to. Um, so I guess my question is, is it the stagnant water, or is it the flushing of the pipes? It can't be both. And I feel like you guys would get a lot better response and a lot more respect from the community if you just admit that you don't know what's going on just as well as we don't. And we need to work together as a community, as a whole unit, not as the people that I respect and the people that I don't. And we need to solve this problem as a community. I think that's basically all I have to say, and I'm sure many other people have said it. But, it's just frustrating at this point, all of the different excuses. Um, as well as, I've read, I'm sorry, giving them this, sweating like a dick. Um, and I'm late because I just got off work. Um, I read that manganese is a needed substance to transform iron into steel. So I think that some of the problem is coming from the deterioration of the pipes, and the manganese existing in the pipes themselves when they were transformed from the iron to the steel. And I think that that also needs to be brought up whenever it comes to the storage of our water. How old is that smiley face water tank that our water is sitting in? I've been coming up here for thirty years, it's at least that old. So, we have stagnant water in rusty tanks that are running through hundreds of miles of rusty pipeline, coming in our homes, and we're making excuses. It's frustrating. That's all. That's it.
I'd like to say something to Mrs. Cup, or Mrs. Cup, or whoever it is. The tests that we've done have told us a lot about the status of our system. When we always say something at these meetings, it gets twisted around, and I've been twisted here by some of these people. That's how that goes.
Some of these people that you guys don't respect?
That's it.
That's exactly it. That's not what I said. That is not what I said. But anyways, but anyways. Our water coming out of the ground at the well field has been tested to show have a level of manganese up here that's just slightly below the recommended maximum for infants. When we test our water in town, specifically I'll name where it goes to Hurley. The rate, the amount of manganese there is about one-sixth of that amount. So, me, not a scientist, I'm just trying to figure out what this tells me. This tells me that somewhere between the well field and flowing to Hurley, that manganese is depositing somewhere. And it's depositing on the walls of our pipes. It's not stagnant. Magnesium is a physical particle. It's in our water. The water's flowing through our pipes. We have fewer users than we used to have. There's less flow, less movement of the water. It's not stagnant, but it's not moving as much. More is settling out. And so, this is my logic. Just me, I'm making this up. And I think that's what the tests tell us.
That's the problem. You guys are making things up. Instead of saying, I'm sorry, we don't understand, but we're gonna work our hardest to try to help this community.
We are working. We are working.
That's not what we're here for.
Then why wouldn't you have it on the agenda? That would have solved all of this if people would have seen this as item whatever on the agenda, and you're gonna talk about it, your city manager who's paid a hundred thousand dollars a year is gonna give a report, so you can find out what's going on in the public. Why?
We're just really worried. Let me finish. I mean, holy cow. This happened last time, too. So yes, this is my opinion, and of course, I'm guessing, but I, it has a theory that I've heard other people who are, other people who might know more than me say. I, I'm just guessing.
That you respect.
I can't, you see, I, I can't think of a better way to say it. So, the numbers do tell us that there's more manganese going into our pipes than is coming out of our pipes. The tests all across town bear this out. Then when we flush our system, the manganese stirs up and milk and dirty water. And that's also borne out by these results. So, we clearly have more manganese in our water than is coming out of our closets. The tests have counted this. So what do we do about it is the question, and what are we doing about it? And Mr. Erickson at one of our last meetings listed a thing, a series of things that we are doing. And so I think that perhaps it may be beneficial to have an update for the next several meetings or for time to come on what's going on with our efforts to understand the water system.
Isn't that a number you're on, shouldn't that be out in there?
And we're providing update every meeting, but if you want a more formal update, we can talk about the structure of that if you like. But there is an update in our house at every meeting so far.
So, the result of the test being done in people's homes has borne out the theory that indeed why the metals are settling out of the, out of the water because they're particles, they're heavier than water is. And so, how do we fix that? Somebody suggested ozone, I don't know anything about ozone. But at the end of the day, the particles are coming out of our walls. And it appears at this point, without much more knowledge that we're gonna gain through some of these engineering studies, that we are in fact going to probably need a filtration system. There are other choices mentioned by other people. We have an RFP out now for a preliminary engineering study on our water system. This though, this has not happened overnight, it's a process. And we are getting our bids, I hope we have done over our proposals, haven't done it yet.
Yeah, it's going out this week, so, the proposals are finished, they're going to be sent out. We'll be responding back from any firm that wants to respond to us with the right credentials. So again, if there's firms out there that anybody knows of, they want to send to, let us know. We'll make sure it gets sent to them. We have a whole list of firms that specialize in water filtration. And they can look at all the options, filtration is one of them. And, you know, if there are other options that they're aware of, you know, you deal with this every day, that's what they specialize in. They can share that with us, and, you know, we can look at other alternatives if there are.
And the filtration, where we do it is a heavy lift. We're gonna have to figure out how to raise a fair amount of money. And all of these steps take time, and that's all I can tell. Whatever we do is not gonna happen. Whatever we do is not going to happen this week, this month, this year. Sure, go ahead. If that's okay, Matt.
Um, just, in addition to the filtration system, I'm reading that because our manganese is in a liquefied state, that there has to be a chemical added to the water to solidify the manganese before it can be properly filtered out of the systems. So, what would the plan be for that? Are we going to dump all of these chemicals into our water, and then hope and pray? And, I mean, aside from a whole new water system?
And maybe you can try to help answer a little bit of that. Again, the engineering, you know, specialists that do this, they specialize in water filtration and different forms of that, will give us information on that, they have a background in that area. If there's a specific question on how does manganese work, and that type of thing, and what are the effects? We do have contacts through the Health Department and Department of Health and Human Services that are toxicologists, that really do specialize in those specific questions. That is information, you know, we do have those contact numbers, if someone wants to call and has a specific question for them, they can answer that, you know, because they have a background in that type of stuff.
I'll say one more thing. It was a pretty heated environment at that, that last meeting that we had. And it was really hard for any of us to get a word in edgewise, even though we were.
So, Rock, a little bit of.
See, like this, like this.
Hey, sir, I'm definitely one of your, I can't hear normally.
Case in point.
But people could not, let, no, stop it. Stop. I might not be somebody you respect, but that room is not a place to have a meeting like that. You automatically have to yell just to hear each other.
So, I apologize for using that word, I said, my phrase was something along those, if I talk to the people, I know.
No, you said respect.
No, no.
We have Bobby, we have Bobby over here.
That's good, if I said it wrong, I apologize. But what I, if I did say, not say this, I, what I meant to say was, I talked to people that I know, and they're saying their water was good. Then later I talked to other people who I know and respect, and they told me their water was not good. I didn't talk to anybody other than those people, period. And I wish I'd had not used the word respect.
Why wouldn't you?
And I apologize for that.
Why wouldn't you believe other people that came to you anywhere?
Nobody else came to me.
We had a whole, we had a ton of people at the very, on the June twenty-fourth meeting.
Rick, why did it take so long for anybody in the city to do anything about it? People have been complaining for over ten years.
And as I said in that statement, I had no perception of a problem. I just had no perception.
Okay, you didn't, but the city manager did. People have complained to the utilities manager. Why didn't anybody listen? Even when all of this blew up this summer, Jim's the one that got in touch with the guy from Eagle. Nobody from the city even thought, hey, let's test our wells. Do you understand why people are upset about this? They have been ignored for years, and it keeps going on.
And I, and now we've learned a lot, and we're working forward. And we can't go back in time. All we can do is, is, is take, continue to learn, and continue to move forward. And, and, and I'm, I'm going to warn everybody, too, that a filtration system, because I'm learning a great deal. I, I have much more to learn as well, but there is no instant fix to this issue.
The city should not be handling this, ma'am. It should be, it should be in a firm that actually goes through. We don't have, we don't have trust. You, you don't, if, with my heart, I'm a little heart specialist, because even though I went to medical school, I'm not a heart specialist, and I really don't want to do my own heart surgery. But I hope to see somebody that believes most of the talking about. Obviously, they don't know how to handle a water problem.
So, with, the city.
So why are they handling it when we specifically requested?
The city is going to hire, that the commission will review, with, and RFP is going to know for engineering firms that are trained, because we, we understand. We understand.
Deposits everybody is paid, how about all the rates?
Well, we're discussing the policy, you're saying?
What section?
The section. My turn.
Yeah.
We cannot argue back and forth. There is citizen comment for you to express your concerns, which you did. And now, we digest the citizen's comment.
And do not go.
Stop, stop.
You got me to stop, I have a right to speak too.
No, not right now, it's my turn. What? If, if I sit and I try to listen to everything that everyone says, I cannot hear you, and I cannot hear you, and I cannot hear you, if I'm yelling at the top of my lungs. I can't. So, I sit and I respectfully listen to what all of you say. And then, we held workshops, and I respectfully listened to the people that came here. I respectfully listened to the people that presented a problem. And I said, that water flushing affected some people, and it didn't affect me, but it affected some people. It didn't affect.
It's not just the flushing.
This is not back and forth.
I see that. Maybe it should be. Maybe, maybe something could be accomplished, if you actually answer a question once in your lifetime.
Okay.
You can invent me, I love these, I don't care. I got a wheel home, I don't want to get rid of anything.
So, let me finish. So, when you respectfully listen to what people have to say, then you inform an intelligent decision. And let me say this.
So I.
So I listen, I listened to the people that said to me that the last water filtration, or the, the, the water flushing that took place, that was the main reason for this, was that some people had really dirty water, and some people had good water. But I listened to the people. And then, I wrote notes on it. Then I listened to the people that came to the meeting that were experts. And I listened to the people that told us that we had two hundred and fifty custody here on the water. And I listened to the people that came to the last meeting, John Holland, an expert from the Michigan Rural Water Association. Then I listened to Tom Camino from the Michigan Department of Employment. Then I listened to Linda Fisher, and I listened to all of you. Then, I read the paper, and I listened to the news, and I see that the additional tests that have taken place in people's homes. First, the tests that were taken from all five areas in the city. And then I listened to the tests that were taken at people's individual homes who have had bad problems. And the tests came back, and they were extremely positive. Because the people that were tested, and the areas that surround them, aren't being subject to any chemicals that are over the limits, and so are under the limits, thank God. But, the city commission has respectfully listened, and then we came up with a plan based on these last three meetings of moving forward with a water filtration system. Now, folks, this is how government works. If I listen to you, and you present a problem, and I say, okay, that's a problem, then I listen to the experts. And none of us, no one in this room can reach into their pocket like some billionaire and pull out enough money to get this done. And none of us have went to college, and none of us know exactly what to do. So we listen to the experts. And now we probably have three hundred tests of our water, and we're moving forward. And all of you have a right to disagree, and say we're not fast enough, or we're dragging our feet, but I tell you right now that I've written down comments, and I've listened to everyone. And the same thing was true with the marijuana, we have the marijuana meeting. I categorized, I wrote down, every person that, that had a comment, it was a hundred and five comments. There was a hundred and one for marijuana, and there was four against. And I, so, what I'm saying is that we're listening to the experts, we're listening to you, and we're moving forward, and we're working together, because we are working together. And anyone who says, any, this is my, anyone who says different is, is not saying the truth, because we are working together. And as the city commissioner, you know what we have to do? We have to take your comments, we have to take other people's comments, we have to take the business community, we have to take the experts, all of this has to get filtered through us. And we cannot jump to conclusions, we have to base everything on sound scientific evidence. But it was, it was begun by the people that said, these flushings really affected our water, and they were terrible. And I told those people at that meeting that I agreed with them, I had no reason to disbelieve them. No reason to disbelieve them, and no one had any reason to disbelieve that my water was fine at my house. But just because my water was fine, didn't mean that I was going to disbelieve someone else. So that's where it snaps. We're trying hard, we're trying hard for all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to address the commission of items not on the agenda?
Water issues? One joke.
Okay, I'm going to move on to other business. By the way, discussing consider approval pay application number one, of Archer, Leonard, and Carter Asphalt Sealers LLC.